Special meeting of the Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is the body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair.
Here.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sankar.
Mr. Mumper.
Here.
Do we have six members present, so we will go ahead and proceed. We have three requests to address council on the proposed ordinance that we will hear prior to consideration, and I'll take them in the order in which I receive them. So the first is Lynn Ellis. If you will come forward, give us your name and address, then you'll have five minutes to address council.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Ellis. I live at 4630 Baker Avenue. First, let me say, I'm not adverse to medical marijuana, per se. My father was prescribed Marinol as part of his cancer treatment after his chemo. We know that the drug has been used for years under medical scrutiny. There's a lot of uncertainty for each state that has a medical marijuana. It is still illegal under the federal law. We know that the previous administration in DC worked under the framework of the so-called Cole memo, under which states can operate marijuana programs without inviting legal scrutiny from the Department of Justice. But the current US Attorney General is an ardent critic of marijuana and has sought to increase authority to enforce the federal ban, and I thought it was only right to remind everyone of that fact. We also know that many cities and villages in Hamilton County and surrounding counties have banned and reused a moratorium. I thought it was a wise decision for our city to have a moratorium. After all, we've let so many things come into our city that were not what citizens wanted. That being said, if you are for dispensaries, cultivators, et cetera, where in the city would they be allowed? Do you want them on Montgomery Road? Do you want them in an industrial area? That's basically where Forest, the city of Forest Park, put dispensaries. There's that zoning issue. Do you know how much the city will receive from revenues? These will not be huge moneymakers for the city. Two percent is what they will, what we will receive. So for a million-dollar profit, the city of Norwood would receive $20,000. I really think we need to get out in front of this issue because once you allow someone to go through the application process, it'll be much harder to regulate because they have to have a physical address for their application, which would make it tougher to change zoning. Think it through and find the best answer for our city. That's all I'm asking. Really think about what we want this to be. If we want it, where will we permit them? Will there be unintended consequences such as an uptick in crime? Will we tax our already overworked police department? I'm not against medical marijuana. I just want you all to think this through before you proceed with your decision. There's a lot to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Next is Deb Robinson. And if you'll come forward and give us your name and address, you'll have five minutes to address.
Nancy Toulor, no?
Certainly. Thank you.
My name is Deb Robinson at 2048 Maple Avenue. I'm here today representing ASAP Norwood, which is the Local Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. Dear members of Norwood City Council, as members of ASAP Norwood, your local substance abuse prevention coalition, we urge you to vote to maintain the moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries within the Norwood city limits. As a substance abuse prevention coalition, we know that reducing access to controlled substances is the most effective method of reducing exposure to substances of harm to young people and mitigating ongoing substance abuse concerns. We have long been a community that cares about our children and teens. Maintaining this moratorium is yet one more way that we might protect our children from harmful exposure to controlled substances. We can and should learn from other communities who have gone down this path. In September of 2016, the Journal for American Medical Association Pediatrics reported the following findings. Between 2009 and 2015, the Aurora, Colorado Children's Hospital saw an increase of 150% in children 10 and under that were treated for overexposure to marijuana. These included children ingesting marijuana-infused edibles, access to marijuana through containers that were not child-resistant, and exposure to smoke. This rate grew higher than any other place in the country. The median age for these children was 2.4 years old. The impacts of marijuana dispensary density and neighborhood ecology on marijuana, an article from the Scientific Journal of Alcohol Drug and Drug Dependency, reports on a National Institute of Health study on the consequences of the physical location of dispensaries, noting the following. For communities with dispensaries, hospitalizations with marijuana abuse or dependence codes increased from 17,469 in 2001 to 68,408 in 2012. More than 85% of marijuana-related hospitalizations were coded as abuse rather than dependence. When the research team mapped the location of marijuana dispensaries and cross-referenced it with the ZIP code for each patient's home, they found that each additional dispensary per square mile in the ZIP code was associated with a 6.8% increase in the number of hospitalizations linked to marijuana abuse and dependency. In addition, the team found that marijuana dispensaries and hospitalizations were more likely to be located in areas where lower household incomes and lower educational attainment. We urge the city council members to stand by the moratorium and vote not to repeal this extension.
That's good.
That's it?
That's good.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. And the last one I have is Amy Wolfenbarger. If you will come forward and give us your name and address, then you'll have five minutes to address council.
Amy Wolfenbarger, 5406 Cartha Avenue. I guess I would like to start by saying that the issue tonight is not legalization. The issue is businesses in our community. Medical marijuana is legal in Ohio. I guess I'll just start there. But I would like to go on to say that I am in support of cannabis businesses in our community. I'm sure that most people in city council are already aware of that. Tonight, for me, the biggest issue is why are we here? Just last month, all of you unanimously voted to kill a resolution that would permanently ban these businesses in our community. Now, here we are tonight in an emergency meeting at the taxpayers' dispens to discuss this matter again. I have to wonder why. One can assume by persons who have spoken in opposition tonight that it is probably due to maybe responses from the opposition that is speaking here tonight. I have to question why they were not in attendance at the meeting where the ban was voted on at the end of September. There were other citizens here at the meeting that night aside from just myself. Tonight, I stand alone because not everyone could come again. I am not the only one, as you all have seen by the interactions on the computer, that supports this in Norwood. I honestly feel that we are the majority. You claim the 60-day extension, or as I've been told by some of you, is to give you a better understanding of this law, to give you more time. You already claimed that when you signed the original moratorium in November of 2016. You signed the moratorium then to give you time to do the research on this bill. House Bill 523 was signed into law by John Kasich in June of 2016. The framework was designed at that time. It's an 86-page bill. Last month, you said that Mr. Keith Moore had analyzed the bill and broken it down into a language that all of you understood for you to read so you could understand it. Then, many of you, if not all of you, sat here and spoke about how highly restrictive this bill was, giving me and others the impression that you did understand, that you had researched the bill. Yet again, you're asking for me more time to research the bill. This vote was to extend the moratorium by 60 days. The decision was highly strategic, I believe, and it seems as though it was a quite sneaky, underhanded attempt to stop the industry in Norwood altogether. I'm disgusted, and quite honestly, I'm insulted that the council believes that myself and the rest of the community are that ignorant. Would I work on something so hard for all these years and not understand the deadlines? Was I supposed to buy that the 60-day moratorium? No one knew that the deadline for dispensaries was the 17th. No one knew that the deadline for cultivator applications is already expired. This matter was supposed to be referred to the Committee of Housing Health and Recreation, I believe, is what I was told. That's where I've been watching for meetings. You weren't supposed to turn around and without even consulting the public, vote to extend this moratorium. Shame on all of you. This is not Obamacare. It is an 86-page document that was written in June and signed by our, prior to June, and signed by our governor in June over a year ago, signed into law September 9th of We would appreciate if you would do your jobs and be informed voters when acting on behalf of Norwood residents. Tonight, I would like to ask that you not only repeal the 10-day extension, but that you also repeal the original moratorium and perhaps write an ordinance that would allow medical businesses in our community. The citizens have spoken, and you can't just table these discussions any longer. 96% of Ohioans support medical cannabis. I reach out to city council members. I get no response. No response, pro, no response, for, no answer at all is not a good answer either. Y'all can't hide from the issue anymore, and it would have been nice again if the opposition would have come out last month at the meeting so that maybe some of their questions and statistics could have been answered or addressed by someone who's more knowledgeable on the subject. I don't really feel that that was entirely fair. So I'd like to thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfenbarger. We will now move on to consideration of the ordinance repealing ordinance 28-2017, the ordinance which was to extend by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning occupancy or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. So the reason for having all three readings at the, at this meeting is that by this, this ordinance that we had passed in the last meeting, it's a 60-day moratorium that overlaps the application period for medical marijuana dispensaries. That period is November 3rd through November 17th. At that meeting, I was not aware that that application period was, was there. So my intent at the, at the meeting when I voted yes there, it was not to try to subvert the process or try to completely ban it. It really was to give 60 more days for us to figure out if we do want to add some zoning restrictions or anything else onto where these medical marijuana facilities might be located. So that being said, in order for us to not prevent somebody from applying for medical marijuana dispensary, we need to have all three readings tonight.
Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Hanahan.
I just want to clarify, we have to have a supermajority tonight? What is the supermajority?
It requires six votes to suspend the rules.
To pass this resolution. Do we need a supermajority?
You need six votes to suspend the rules and then five votes to pass the ordinance because it does have an emergency clause in it.
I do have something to say. I don't have a time limit, do I?
No.
That's big, Fred.
And the chair wants to note that Mr. Sankar is now present.
Hello, Mr. Sankar.
Sorry that you had to fight the traffic.
I would just like to clarify first that we did have a Housing, Health, and Recreation Committee meeting, and we did give proper notice to that, and medical marijuana was absolutely on that agenda. I want to start by stating that I personally did understand, and I knew exactly what I was voting on, for the moratorium prohibiting the medical marijuana business at this time. At the September 26 meeting, I stated I was in favor of medical marijuana and its benefits. However, my job is to do what I believe is the best for the city and to listen to my constituents, who I found by surveying them, several people to be overwhelmingly against a dispensary in Norwood. I also did a tremendous amount of research. I spoke with a multitude of cities who have already had this vote. I talked with pharmacists, with Chandra, and I learned that ASAP, Norwood Drug and Alcohol Coalition, were also fully against the dispensaries here in Norwood. I did not know Deborah's going to be here tonight. If I am the only one on council to vote against this tonight, I'm fine with that because I'll be working for what I believe is the most beneficial for Norwood. If there was some confusion on the rules when they originally voted, or if a fellow council member has simply changed their mind of the vote, that is their right. And if this ordinance passes, that is the way council is supposed to work. There are always people against or for almost every issue we ever vote on. We're never going to please everybody. We're always going to disappoint somebody. I do sympathize with those who use cannabis for medical reasons. With that said, we cannot prohibit the use of marijuana in our city and never intended or considered attempting to do so. With, other council members stated on September 26 meeting that they wanted to wait to consider banning marijuana until they were able to see the positive or negative effects on communities and neighborhoods. I'm sorry, wanted to consider banning medical marijuana sales in dispensaries until they were able to see the positive or negative effects on the communities or neighborhoods. Most of us were in agreement. The relevant question is going to be, how can we do that until we have Ohio community models to study? We can only do that by waiting to see what happens. My concern is that if we open the door for applications, we will have backed ourselves into a quarter and tied our hands and will not be able to take action in the future. I want you all to picture this applicant who is now paid $5,000 for an application fee. They've probably spent many hours in time working on their business details, effort securing and negotiating property and the cost involved because a physical address is required for the application. They likely would have attorney or architect and designer fees and costs that have accumulated. So they have already invested a great deal in time and monies into the application process. And regardless, if they can get their $5,000 back, if we decide to ban it later, there is a lot more into this that they've spent on and a lot of time and a lot of monies. It's, there's a lot going into an application. We will be opening the doors and encouraging applicants to apply for a dispensary that we're saying we'll decide on the rules, regulations, zonings, zoning, and answer the question on to permit or ban later. How are we going to implement the rules or deny them after the fact? It's not a fair process to either the applicant or the citizens. A moratorium will not ban, but delay the medical marijuana business in Norwood. As this process develops, I'm sure more dispensaries will be added to fill the need. And at that time, we should have the data needed to make an informed decision on this very important issue. I researched many communities willing, dealing with the same issues, sat and watched lots of council meetings, which we know can be boring, and found that the most compelling information came from Police Chief Ron Farrell in Mason. He was not speaking for or against the issue, but to give information. He feels the state has done a wonderful job licensing and regulating, but also states that there is a lack of information of law enforcement response and impact on public safety. Chief Farrell's research revealed various responses from police departments and drug task forces he was in contact with in communities that already allow medical marijuana and/or recreational marijuana. Here's three findings. Number one, in Marion, Marion in Williamson County, Illinois, medical marijuana, there's no increase or change in crime. However, their dispensaries are only located in the industrial zone of the town where there is very little residential housing. Boulder, Colorado, medical and recreational marijuana. Initially, a significant spike in criminal activity related to marijuana, including theft, robbery, and violent crime across the board. This has since leveled off, but there's no indication if it leveled off to pre-legislation or leveled off to the fact that they are not seeing a continual increase. Jackson, Michigan, medical marijuana. Very noticeable increase. And this is who, this was definitely, I know this one was when he spoke to the drug task force. It was a very noticeable increase in criminal activity and a significant increase in robbery, shootings, thefts, increased marijuana and OVI incidents. Facilities have been shut down due to criminal investigations, and they have had instances of known drug dealers operating some of these medical marijuana facilities. You know, I'm sure that all of these states have had their own rules and regulations and thought they were protected, but there are always loopholes that are later discovered and things happen. I believe that we need, before lifting this moratorium, to have a plan to develop and implement rules and regulations regarding the location and operation of medical marijuana-related businesses within Norwood to ensure that the necessary regulations conform to the goals of Norwood City Council and ensure the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of Norwood citizens. During my research, I don't have a complete list because I have to call each community and research online, and I, time was limited, but here is a partial list of communities that have banned medical marijuana businesses, and out of this, two are covered by a moratorium for two years or until the middle of next year. Evendale, Hamilton, Fairfield, Indian Hill, Madeira, Montgomery, Marinemont, Wyoming, Springdale, Sharonville, Mason, Sims Township, Westchester, Lew Ash, Anderson Township, and Colrain Township. Reasons for their actions range from not wanting to be test cases for a new state program to waiting for data on the effects of such business to communities. They also want zoning rules and regulations in place before accepting applications. To me, this doesn't sound ridiculous. It sounds absolutely reasonable. When you look at these communities, I mean, look at, you know, most of these are very well-respected community and desirable for people to live in. And, you know, what they do have in common is they're not afraid to say wait, to get the answers you need, and they're not afraid to say no. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. So, and I just want to thank, you know, the speakers that were here. Thank you to the previous councilperson for the information that was provided. I think we'd better remember, though, that what we voted on at this last meeting was a moratorium, and what truly my intentions were, that we had a 60-day moratorium. After, after we voted, it was brought to my attention that, that moratorium, like I said before, will prevent any application of the 60 allowed across the state, will prevent any application for any of those to be located in Norwood. And I don't think that was clear at that last meeting, and even Mr. Sankar at the last meeting alluded to it, saying, asking a question about the application period or about applications. And honestly, I find it very concerning that when that question was asked, so, we didn't know the answer, but I feel like there were, and it was said, that there was somebody in the room that did know the answer. And so it's concerning to me that at least it wouldn't have just been made public that the answer, you know, to let us know that what we are voting on would have actually prevented anybody from applying. Mr. Sankar at the meeting had encouraged people to apply anyways, which showed that we didn't, you know, apply anyways, even though the moratorium's here, which showed we didn't quite understand that this moratorium would prevent a full application, would prevent the application. So, you know, I just want, if we're going to do this, I think we should do it right. So if you all, if there's people on this council that want to see a full moratorium in Norwood, then I think that we shouldn't do it with this process. We should do it, you know, it should be done through an actual change in the zoning law. The Planning Commission has already passed it, so if there is out there, just, you can even have, let's have a special meeting, you know, get it on the agenda. Let's, let's just vote on that. I don't think that we should do it through the 60-day moratorium that to many on the outside seems like it could have, there were ulterior motives on the, there were ulterior motives behind it. So I just want to encourage councilmembers to vote yes on the three readings. Let's just have a vote on this tonight to repeal, and let's try to be as transparent as possible as we move forward with this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Is there any other discussion? Just want to make sure there isn't anybody else. First, Mrs. Hanahan.
Is somebody else? Go ahead.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I would like to say, just for explanation, I did put this ordinance on originally, and, or the moratorium. We were on a time limit. We had a Housing and Recreation meeting, Housing, Health, and Recreation. I immediately said I'd put it on because of our time limit. If we want to take it off, we can. Immediately, we had a councilperson who came with their reasoning why we needed to do this. We eventually all agreed on it. However, we did discuss dates, and I knew exactly, and I'm not going to lie, I knew exactly what we were doing. I think other people did too. And regardless if you knew and you just changed your mind, that's fine, but, and it might not have been clear, I did understand, I mean, I, Mr., Mr. Sankar did say, did show some confusion. At that moment, I thought, oh, was I incorrect? I didn't jump up, no. I didn't jump up in correcting because I thought, oh, maybe I was wrong, and they could still apply, but I knew I still wanted the moratorium. So, no, I didn't jump in and say, no, you're wrong, because I wasn't a hun, I just thought maybe I was wrong. But this wasn't, I mean, this was in Housing, Health, and Recreation, and it was discussed thoroughly. I'm not going to say there weren't people there who were confused because there very well could have been, but it wasn't everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
No.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
A vote of six to one. The motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance repealing ordinance 28-2017, the ordinance which was extended, which was to extend by 60 days, the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, and building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance repealing Ordinance 28-2017, the ordinance which was to extend by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance repealing Ordinance 28-2017, the ordinance which was to extend by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark.
I move to pass this ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Mr. Blair.
I was raising my hand to speak, not to second.
Please.
I was raising my hand to speak, not to second.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Clark. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Bonzel now. Is there any discussion? Mr. Blair.
Yes. The reason why I'm going to vote to repeal this ordinance is because this week I talked with the law department to get a better understanding of the moratorium and what it may limit and what it may not. I also got a better understanding of the medical marijuana dispensary laws on where it can be and where it can't be. Now, I do understand Marilyn's reasoning. I thought her research was very good, very well-in-depth, and she spoke very clearly. But just on a personal level, I had a friend who lived here, and his daughter suffered from seizures, seizures pretty bad. And this was a while ago, and they ended up having to move to Colorado to get her, it was like a cannabis spray or something to help with her seizures. And they were a really good family. I know it helps with veterans with PTSD, and I know it helps people that are clinically depressed. And the way I look at this, I know this isn't to ban marijuana or not. I know this is just about repealing the moratorium to let people apply for this, but the way I look at it, if this can help people, and this isn't for recreational purposes, but if this can help people medically, who am I to say, no, sorry, we're not going to be able to give you that benefit of getting the medicine that you need where you live? So.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
No.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
By a vote of six to one, the motion carries. We have no absent members. Mr. Bonzel.
I move adjourned.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present vote in either the motion carries. This special meeting is hereby adjourned.[1793.61]